All right, I'm going to call this meeting of the Westland City Council order. We'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Jim Godbout.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Godbout?
Present.
Councilwoman Green?
Present.
Councilman Hersberg?
Here.
Pro Tem Londo?
Present.
Councilwoman McDermott?
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowsky?
Present.
President Hart?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Okay. All right, we have no special presentations or announcements today. So we will open up questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person be recognized only at beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda today. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion and support from council. Okay? So is there anybody on my right? Anybody on my left? All right, seeing no questions on the consent calendar, we'll move, or excuse me, questions on the agenda, we'll move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Some.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Rakowsky.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Hersberg. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of study session held August 24, 2021. Approval of requests from women of the evangelical.
Evangelical.
Evangelical Lutheran Church to host an Oktoberfest on October 9, 2021 at Celebration Lutheran Church, 39375 Joy Road, and to serve beer on the premises as part of the event. Traffic control order 2021-03, place one stop sign on the southeast corner of Lancashire and Hampshire. Approval of bid for professional services related to the demolition of condemned buildings. Administration recommends low bidder Thomas trucking services and the total amount not to exceed $25,250 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County to utilize Park Millage funding for year 2019 to 2021 in the amount of $18,414 for improvements at Stottlemyre Park and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Approval of annual managed engine subscription for help desk and desktop management software amount of $7,080. Approval of annual trend micro antivirus subscription through CDWG amount in the amount of $6,075. Approval of annual watch guard firewall subscription through CDWG in the amount of $5,999. Approval of annual Zix Protect Essentials email filtering software subscription through CDWG in the amount of $5,650. Adoption of prepared land division resolution, south side of Cherry Hill, just west of Newburgh. This is planning department number 1879 and land division was approved by city council July 19, 2021. Moving to new business. Item one, approval of minutes of regular meeting held August 16, 2021.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Godbout?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDermott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowsky?
Yes.
President Hart?
Abstained due to absence.
Okay. New business, item number two, approval of minutes of closed study session held August 16, 2021.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDermott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowsky?
Yes.
President Hart?
Again, abstained due to absence.
New business, item number three, nomination of member to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term to expire October 15, 2024. Adam Goring has submitted a letter requesting consideration for reappointment.
Well, is there a nomination?
Yeah, I'd like to place the nomination of Adam Goring.
Adam Goring is nominated, are there any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
There's a motion from Councilman Hersberg to close nominations. Supported by Councilman Londo, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Motion carries unanimously, nominations are closed.
New business, item number four, appointment of member to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term to expire October 15, 2024.
Some move, Londo?
Motion by Councilman Londo. Supported by Councilwoman Rakowsky. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. I don't believe Mr. Goring's in the room, but if you do see him, be sure to congratulate him. Thank you.
New business, item number five, approval of vouchers.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Now moving to public comment. Let me find my notes. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is a speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Is there anyone on my right? Yes.
Hello, my name is Tracy Bresser. I am the founder and the ED for ABCs for Justice or Allies Becoming Co. Conspirators for Justice. I live at 821 East Woodruff, and that's in Hazel Park. And I'll tell you why I've been, why I am here today. On August 24th, an off-duty Westland cop, Sebastian Lavisil, was arrested by two different cities, Northville and Livonia, for assaulting his 24-year-old girlfriend. He was released on a $3,000 and a $5,000 bond. Westland Police put him on administrative leave. It seems as if the city of Westland has a police problem. It seems that you hire police, no matter what their history. You had an officer last year that beat a black disabled man with a baton. Christopher Landis was fired, but not after it cost the city $2.5 million. This cop, by the way, was hired after he was fired from Farmington Hills PD for DUI. 2013 DUI, fired from Farmington Hills Police, and Westland went ahead and hired him anyways. Which is funny, because I know that if I drive down the street and I get pulled over by a Westland cop and I give him my driver's license, he can tell my whole, if I'm a serial drunk driver, if I'm, if I'm going ahead in a serial speeder. But you're telling me that you couldn't find out if he was fired from another police department? Wow, but see, I'm not done. In 2018, you had a Westland sergeant allow a black man to die in custody after he told the sergeant he was having a seizure. Nobody cared. He's dead. And what did that cost the city? Maybe it's a matter of the council not holding the mayor accountable? Or maybe it's a mayor who isn't holding the police chief accountable? Only one council member. One council member had the guts to say, "This is enough," and not vote to settle with the city. And you know what?
Your time's up, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure it is. Call me Councilwoman Green if you need volunteers for your run for mayor.
All right, ma'am.
I'm more than happy to do my well-known work for you.
Ma'am, thank you. Is there anybody on my left? Sir?
Greetings and the Lord, City Council, Deputy Mayor, and members of the city of Westland. Dan Burke, resident of Westland for over 25 years now, can't believe that, and principal at St. Matthew Lutheran Church and School. I have a lot of great things to tell you about St. Matthew, but I do need to be a citizen first today. And just to let you guys know, something this last year, my youngest son, who's 12 years old, decided to pick up is to watch you guys on YouTube every week, or every other week. And he sees how you guys behave and how you guys treat each other, and he can tell me without me prompting who he likes and dislikes because of how you guys behave to each other. So just something to think about as you guys are representing the city up there. I also have to say, the first time, I'm disappointed with our special pickup system. Last Monday, I put in a special pickup for a bed frame and a box spring. When I left today, it was still sitting outside my house. My pickup is on Fridays, so I don't know what's going on with the Click app, but I put in another one for this week, just to make sure that gets through. And then lastly, as a resident, I want to say, like I said last time, thank you for the bike path in Wildwood. I look forward to seeing more of that as it develops. And for Councilwoman Green, since you weren't able to be here, I don't live on Wildwood, but I run it and bike it every day, and I would love to see you support that program too, and not just the residents that live there. Now, for great things about St. Matthew, we have started our 73rd year of education in the community. Last year, we had zero COVID cases throughout our students and our teachers, so we are very proud of the situation that we have going on in cleaning and all of our protocols. Next Monday is our annual firemen versus the Raiders soccer team, so I'm looking forward to that. Councilman Londo, hopefully you're in goal, so we can score some more goals against you. It's always a fun time for our kids to participate in that. And then the last thing we're doing is, we're starting a capital campaign at St. Matthew. We have major roof issues that we need to fix, and it's great to see that our congregation, we'd love to see the community help us out in helping us out with the roof and redoing our parking lot. But also, more important is our ministry, our outreach ministry. 5% of everything we raise is going to outreach ministry, which one of the things we do is a taco truck on Tuesdays in our parking lot. So if you're hungry and you want some great tacos, come on out 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. or when she sells out. So that's all I have for St. Matthew, and I want to thank you guys and God's blessings.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, if you could, just email us, you got all of our emails. Email us on council so we can pass along to the trash sanitation company that was missed. Thank you. Is there anybody on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I regret being here for the reasons that I'm here today. Wanting to talk to you about the police problem, right? You all have a clear problem with your police. Last week, the picture was painted in a negative manner about the Doliver children, not last week, your last meeting. Painted a picture about these children that just was not true. Prosecutor sat here and basically lied. That is horrible to know, that a prosecutor could lie to you all, lie to the community and say that they reached out to this mother before they dropped the charges, and they did not. I was sitting right there in the courtroom, this is why I know that it was a lie. We cannot continue to operate business as usual when it comes to policing matters. And I say this again, and I said it last week, if it had have been either one of your babies and me as a black woman chasing them, hurling racial slurs with a taser, you can best believe that I would be locked up. It wouldn't be a misdemeanor, it wouldn't be a smack on the wrist, but this is what has happened to the Doliver family, and it is just despicable. These charges need to be handed to the AG's office for the Hate Crimes Task Force where they should be, and not try to give them a slap on the wrist because they are young women. They know what they did against these children who, by the way, are still having panic attacks, who are still affected by these crimes. You've already gave one a slap on the wrist, but there's another one. Charges can still be given to the AG. This is what needs to happen. Yes, you have a police problem. We got calls as an agency about what happened with this off-duty officer. Why is it that 25% of Westland is black, but you got one black officer? Can we just, I need to understand that. I need to understand that how an emerging black population is not being represented on its city council, or any other appointments or anything else. Why is it that you all, as city council, will not be forward-thinking and understand that you've got a problem on your hands and you need to help build racial equity? It's not just on us as black people, it is on you all as well. We are all siblings, and we need to address this problem together, it's the only way. And lastly, you have a police problem. It needs an oversight commission, and not one that includes the police, not one that includes individuals that sit within these, you know, within the ranks of the police department. It needs to be the community manding over and watching over this police department and ensuring that black representation is on that police force.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anybody on my left? Sir?
Lori Wilson, Annapolis Park. They're doing construction on Van Born. They've got Van Born closed off at Middlebelt. They've got Van Born closed off at Henry Rough. They have barriers at the entrance to Fairfield Glades. They have, they're doing construction at Merriman and Van Born. We have cars speeding up and down Henry Rough, they're ignoring your sign, they don't care nothing about that. They're speeding up and down Julius. They're ignoring the stop signs at Dancy and Julius, going into Fairfield Glades. They're ignoring the stop sign at Hanover and Julius, coming down Julius. They are taking detours, which we know everybody does in every community, but it's the speeding. You can't get out your driveway because there's parking on both sides on my end, which I don't mind, but you can't get out your driveway if you've got somebody speeding around a corner. So I hope you can take care of that.
Thank you. Anybody on my right? Sir?
Can I speak because of the road being fixed?
You can speak just about whatever you want to.
All right. They fixing the road right now, Canyon and Carson, and they going from Wayne Road to the dead end, and I live right on the dead end. And they not fixing anything on my, on the street on the dead end. I'd like to know why. I asked these guys who works there, and they say, "Well, you gotta go see the guy on the council, not the council, but the inspector." I can't get a hold of none of them. And one of them, I do get a hold of him, but he talks to you like he's talking to a dog. He don't give me no right answers or anything. So I'd like to know if I can get my, decide my screen, the water, the cement is like this.
Okay.
Where it's broken. And down like that, it gets all icy when it gets cold. And my wife, she took a flip there one time, and she bruised her hip. And it's too late when somebody gets worse than that, you know, gets hurt. I'd like to have something done about it. I believe this officer right here, he was there, I think, for speeders. For one day.
Deputy Mayor, did you want to get the settlement's information after the meeting and try and work and answer his questions?
Certainly. Actually, if you could just give us your name and telephone number, where we talk to you tomorrow.
And get with you and have our Department of Public Service get with you on the repairs they're doing over there. I know in that area right now, they're just doing section repairs, not total reconstruction, but I'll have them give you a call tomorrow. We just need, just your number.
I live kitty-corner from Richard LeBlanc, and he told me the same thing. He said, "Roger, vote to the meeting and tell them about it."
That's the only name he had to say, so now we'll make sure, now we'll make sure they reach out to you tomorrow.
He's a nice guy.
Yeah, we'll take care of it, thank you.
Yeah. I hope you get a fix before somebody gets hurt.
All righty, sir.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You got it. Anybody on my left? Burke?
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee Against Corruption has asked me to speak on their behalf. What I, one of the things they want, right off the bat, they're asking this council if they could file bankruptcy for the city of Westland. The city of Westland is hundreds of millions of dollars in debt. It's due to Mayor William Wilde years ago, against the advice of Mark Bias, our expert in police and fire actuary, not to give out generic buyouts. Mark Bias put in print a one year ahead of time that Westland could not afford to pay for police and fire who only worked 20 years and allow them to buy five years in generic buyouts that would give them the 25 years to get a full retirement. If any company in the United States were given those kind, the buyouts, let you retire after 20 years, they'd be bankrupt. Mayor William Wilde likes to write blank checks and send it to you, your children, and your grandchildren, and this affects everybody on the council. You're all citizens, you all pay taxes like the rest of us. Mayor William Wilde was wild about raising your millage to fund these generic pensions from 3.35 mils to eight mils, almost five mils, after he was told a year ahead of time we couldn't afford it. The other thing that's even more abominable is, as taxpayers and homeowners and residents, you didn't even have a chance to vote on that millage. Everyone got snookered, all of you on the council. How did Wilde raise this extra money? Well, there's a loophole in the city charter, has to do with self-funding. Wilde raised your millage without a vote of the people, and that's exactly what he did. Your millage went up almost five mils. The self-funding means whatever amount of money that police and fire need for their pensions, it can just go up automatically. And it's just, it's just immoral that he did that. Not only that, but immediately, the Westland City incurred over $14 million charge to be amortized over 20 years to help offset the cost of these pensions. It's like a mortgage. He mortgaged us into hock. The contract states, however, that no generic money will be sent to the pension fund. Now, that's almost impossible. All generic money for pension buyouts are supposed to go into the pension fund. Otherwise, it is fraud, theft, and embezzlement.
All right, three minutes are up. Thank you. Is there anybody on my right? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Westland County, or Westland City Council. I'm not a Westland resident, although I shop here quite a bit. I became concerned when I saw on TV that one of your police officers goes around beating women up. I don't think that's a very good example to, for anybody, especially for the man's child who's watching the city council. I'm sure he doesn't have a good opinion of a police officer who behaves in that manner. You claim to be an all-American city, I hope that's not what an all-American city does. I'm here because all too often, we encounter rogue police officers that hop from one police department to another, getting away with the kinds of behavior that would result in the rest of us spending a significant amount of time in jail, and all of us, regardless of which city we live in. We need to band together to stop this from happening. We're at a point in our society where the police conduct is called into question, and I think it's time for all of us to get together and clean shop. If you really want to maintain your image, you got to get rid of that cop. I don't want him coming into Highland Park, I don't want him coming into Hamtramck or Detroit, or in any of the cities in Oakland County. I don't know why they get away with this. You and I, if we get fired on our job for disciplinary reasons, for bad reasons, that follows us around, and we can't work anymore. Or we have to go into another profession where it doesn't matter. Maybe we put, I don't know, but I would urge you, please, get rid of this cop before he does more damage to human beings and more damage to the reputation of the city of Westland. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anybody on my left? Anybody on my right? All right, we'll close citizens' comments and move to comments from the administration, starting with Deputy Mayor, ready.
Wish everybody a happy Liberty Weekend, hope everybody enjoyed their holiday, and Ms. Wilson, we'll have, we'll contact the chief tomorrow. I know he was having some extra patrols down there with the particulars of those folks running stop signs, but we'll have the deputy chief get with the chief tomorrow, and we'll bump up some patrols back down there again. we'll bump up some patrols back down there again. And we'll, sir, we'll contact you. We get your number tonight, we'll contact you tomorrow regarding that, what roadwork that's being done over there. And with that, I just got one quick thing, Council President, if you could have the fire chief just do one comment on another grant that the county's doing in regards to the flooding. Thank you.
Sure thing. Fire chief, give me one second. There you are. Chief?
Good.
Yep.
Yes, Wayne County has a flood assistance grant that opened up today. Wayne County received $5.5 million in state general funds and has an online portal available for applications that opened today. For those that can't get online, there's a number here that is 734-728-3711. One thing to keep in mind that this will close on September 21st. That is from the state, and that you must have submitted a FEMA application in order to apply for this assistance grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, anything from the city attorney's office today?
Thank you, Council President. Just briefly, I think I need to address the issue. The young lady indicated that the prosecutor had lied at the last meeting. I would take exception to that. I know the city attorney, as well as the prosecutor's office, would not have lied about what occurred in that case. And I do know the victim was consulted prior to any plea in the case that has been resolved. So other than that, I just wanted to point out the disagreement with that opinion.
Not true.
Oh, thank you. All right, we'll begin council cominence this evening with Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of quick updates. State Representative Coleman couldn't make it here tonight, but he wanted me to pass along some info about the coffee hour that's coming up. It's Monday, September 13th, at the Westland Public Library. And that's in, that's with Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. So that's Monday, September 13th, and that's at 9:00 AM at the library. And then I just wanted to bring up something that was brought up at Citizens' comments too. I've, I keep getting the same complaint from a lot of residents, just in the last, I want to say, two months at the most. And it's, it's all regarding the trash service, special pickups. And if any of you want to go right now and log into the Click and Fix app, you can see some of the reports that come in in the last couple of weeks, and it's all the same. Recycling container was taken, recycling pickup missed on Van Lawn Street, missed pickup on Wildwood, damaged bins on Birch Lawn, damaged bins on Wildwood, just dozens, Tomahawk Street, Harvey Street, Chirwa, Hively. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention on council. Maybe you guys want to take a look, and it's just something that I think we should all be aware of and trying to maybe take a closer look at, seeing if we can get that cleaned up. So I know we've had new company now for a little over a year, and, you know, I would have imagined that some of these issues would have been cleared up by now. So just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the residents who came tonight. Thank you for coming out and sharing your comments and concerns with us. Relative to the Wildwood Street bike path, I just wanted to address the concerns or the comments of the gentleman who came to the podium. There was a comment that I wasn't able to attend. The meeting was called on Tuesday, September the 24th at 6:00 PM. I did attend the meeting. I had left at 6:50 prior to the meeting adjourning because I had a standing meeting at that time, but I was able to stay for almost the first hour, and I wasn't able to hear your concerns specifically at that meeting. But I have attended, as I stated during that meeting, I attended the meetings that the city of Westland held, at the park, at City Hall. I've spoken to multiple residents who live on Wildwood. As several of them who've come to probably our last three or four meetings stated, they have a petition as of three weeks ago that had roughly 80 homeowners on Wildwood being opposed to that bike path, which is quite significant, because you probably only have maybe six or seven homes, maybe eight per block on a really full block, and they have 80 homeowners on the street of Wildwood who are opposed to that bike path. And so as I stated during, at previous meetings, is that I do not believe elected officials, especially seven, a body of seven people who live in various portions of the city of Westland, none of which live on Wildwood, none of us live on Wildwood. The mayor does not live on Wildwood, and, and none of his administration lives on Wildwood that I'm familiar or, or knowledgeable of. And I do not agree with a extremely small minority of our population pushing our thoughts of what we think would make the city better when you ignore the majority of the residents who will be impacted by that. And I would say at lea, it could be more at this point, but 80 homeowners on Wildwood being opposed to that, and not just because from what they stated, not due to they just don't want a bike path, but there are concerns with speeders, there are safety concerns in that area, and I think they have legitimate concerns. And so if the city is able to produce a reasonable amount of homeowners who are impacted in that direct area, who would provide a argument in support of that bike path, which they have yet to do, my position is that I stand with the residents who have raised a concern. And I do not agree with just ignoring their concerns because we want a bike path. I don't agree with it. Moving on to the concern that was raised regarding police brutality, I want to thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. I think what you said needed to be said. Unfortunately, there's not more people here saying it tonight. Speaking as a member of law enforcement myself, I'm a Wayne County Reserve Sheriff Deputy. I have been for seven years. I also am a graduate of the FBI Citizens Academy. There is a, a narrative that when you speak out against police brutality, that you're anti-police. And this is, I don't believe that this is the case. I think as, you know, and you'll probably hear several people say, I'm not going to comment because there's an open investigation. Yeah, there's an open investigation, there's an open investigation every time something's, something happens. But if it were one of their, one of our family members, we would have an opinion. And I disagree with business as usual that has taken place in our city. I disagree with every time we pay out one of these two, three, four million to five million dollar police brutality lawsuits, that our taxpayers pay the first $250,000 every time, and there's no accountability. But you see other pe, in other cities, the police chief is held directly responsible for what happens on his watch. That is standard protocol and law enforcement. It does not happen in the city of Westland. And in Westland, the police chief reports to Mayor Wild. And outside of politics, what has happened in many of these instances is wrong. And nobody wants to ever say anything about it because most of these people are friends. Many of them, some of them grew up together, they've worked together for 20, 30, however many years. They could be relatives. There aren't many instances within our city that many of these people are related throughout city departments. And so you don't hear people speaking out against this, but I'm familiar with that case. And as a member of law enforcement, I'm disgusted with what happened. I can only imagine what may happen if he becomes enraged when he encounters some, one of our citizens. Or maybe not a citizen of Westland, maybe a citizen that's coming from someplace else. There is an open investigation, which city council is not involved in. The, the, the police chief and the mayor will determine what the ultimate decision is, but I'm frankly disgusted by, by what occurred. I hope the woman who is alleged to have been abused, I hope that she is okay. That is, domestic violence is not something that we should sit up here and use as a, a conversation piece, but when it's time for us to stand up and take action about it, then we're hands off. I don't agree with that. It, something needs to be done about it, and, and hopefully, I frankly, in my opinion, as a Westland taxpaying citizen, I would like to see him removed too. And I, and I hope that is what occurs, but again, I'm, I, it's not ultimately my decision. But I stand with you and the victim of that assault, and if I can help in any way, please let me know.
Ma'am. I understand, ma'am, but you can't. I understand. Thank you.
I also wanted to just briefly address the comments made tonight regarding the Doliver children. Anyone who was present at the last meeting already knows the details in terms of what happened to those children, which was a race-related assault and attack on not only the children, who were black and white children. One is young, is seven years old, but also the mom was assaulted at her home by one of two women who pulled tasers on these children and chased them home from a vehicle, spouting racial slurs at them. I will state for the record that I had the opportunity to speak to the mother before the, the meeting, our last meeting, and also several months ago. And the mother told me firsthand several months ago that she was extremely disappointed that the prosecutor dropped the charges without informing her that they were going to reduce those charges. She was not aware that they were being charged with misdemeanors, and this came firsthand from the mother of those children. So while the prosecutor is saying something completely different tonight, I spoke to the mother, and she was extremely disappointed with the way that that case was handled relative to her children. There have been minimal statements from any official in the city of Westland regarding this, but there's been newspaper articles that the prosecutor has quoted and the police chief has quoted about all these charges. Well, we, we, we kept it in the city of Westland instead of sending it to Wayne County Prosecutor Kim Worthy's office because we wanted to charge the, her or them with reckless driving, and we wanted to just throw all these charges on them. But at the end of the day, when that case went to trial, they didn't, any of, none of those charges that they, you know, so proudly stated in this article, none of those charges applied. There was one misdemeanor charge that held up and no jail time. So that is, those are the facts according to how the charges came down and according to what the mother, who is the victim, stated about how she was treated, how her children were treated, and the outcome of that case. And, and I would, I would, I would guess that she has no reason to lie about having disappointment after learning that these women are only getting charged with misdemeanors if she knew that before it happened. So I, I actually would, I have no reason to believe that this lady is lying, and we'll see what happens. But, you know, this is just another instance that you have to fight for, for, for what's, what's right and not wa, walk away when you believe that you are being mistreated. The, oh, yeah, the, the statements regarding the financial concerns that Mr. Burke stated tonight, thank you for sharing those concerns. I have been looking, there, there's so much to look into, in terms of what has been stated, but I think part of the problem, Mr. Burke, is that people don't come out and vote, you know, they don't. So it's very hard, you know, to even make a difference in, in some of the, the status quo or the way we've always done things in Westland, because we do have people who come to the meeting and they share their concerns and they have valid concerns, but then, you know, people, the community doesn't vote. So by large consensus, it would appear that they're happy with a lot of these financial decisions that are happening in our city. They're either happy or, or misinformed, or uninformed. And, you know, I, I would, there was a decision made during this particular election, if you recall, last year when COVID hit, there was a statewide effort to make voting easy for voters due to COVID, which we're still in the middle of this pandemic. Who knows if we'll be in another shutdown by the end of this year. Every registered voter in the city of Westland received an absentee ballot to, to cast their, to request a, they received an absentee, an application for an absentee ballot to make it easier to vote. And, and I don't know what they're going to do next year when the, when the governor and the attorney general seats are up and some of the state reps. I would be interested to see how they handle that. But this year, during the mayoral and city council race, there was a decision made by our Westland Election Commission, which is made up of Mayor Bill Wild, who's running for office, Jim Hart, or, or Council President Jim Hart, who's also running for office, and Clerk Richard LeBlanc, who's not here tonight. There was a decision made to only mail absentee ballots to the permanent absentee ballot list. So those are the list of mostly senior citizens who voted for these people for 10, 20 years. You know, we have one council person who's been here for more than 20 years. So you have a permanent absentee list that were targeted, which one might say is their core group of supporters, whereas we're still in the middle of this pandemic. Again, I'd be, I'm, I'm going to pay close attention to how the governor's race is handled next year, if they're, if they do another citywide absentee ballot mail out to make it easier for those seats. But again, when you have a, have a community who won't come out, who won't speak up, who you're coming in here alone tonight, it's very hard to, to make a difference when the community does not, does not support, you know, your efforts. So I, I actually share your concerns. We were told by Plannemarang when I was first elected, that if we didn't get a hold to our finances within two years, the city could go into crisis mode due to our financial standings at that time, which was 2018, January of 2018. And here we are four years later. And so, you know, I think if, if the community wants change, they, they have to do more than just speak out about it. They, they need to start voting, or it'll be more of the same. And with that, I thank you, and I will see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Councilman Goddard.
Thanks. I just wanted to congratulate and thank Adam Goring for continuing to serve on the zoning Board of Appeals. In regards to some of the comments on our financial condition in the city, Mr. Rock's opinion, which he's stated numerous times over multiple years, has, has been consistent. Unfortunately, it's not accurate. So I'll just leave it at that, because there's, there's way too much to get into the, the details of exactly what transpired, how we came to the, the pensions, and how the pensions are structured. So that's all I have this evening. Thanks.
All right, Councilwoman Rukowski?
Good evening. I would like to start by thanking and congratulating Mr. Adam Goring on his reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and also thank him for all of his dedicated service to the students of the William D. Ford Technical School, because he is a teacher of construction there. And I hope everyone had a good Labor Day weekend, and for those who are going back to school, like my son did today, I hope you have a successful school year, and that'll be all.
Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening. First off, thank you to Ms. Bressard and Ms. Duckworth, who came and spoke on the two separate issues, the issue with the Doliver children, and also the issue of what happened with Officer Iverson. Obviously, we should all be incredibly troubled in any instance of domestic violence. It is abhorrent behavior, and in any workplace, but especially in law enforcement, it's unacceptable. There is an ongoing, obviously, investigation, and when that plays out, we hope that it plays out with justice for everyone involved, but most especially for the person who was the victim of the domestic violence incident. And that when you have a situation like that, you know, I work in human resources for a living, when you're looking at resumes, when you're screening people for the job that they're supposed to do, we want to make sure that in any profession, we have the best people working there, and that we have people that are qualified to be there. So it's a, it's a really ugly situation, and there, there's no denying that. And, you know, the investigation will play itself out, but certainly, we want to make sure that there is, you know, proper adequate response and justice for those involved and affected by the situation. And one of the things that, you know, I've been working on as a council person, because any one of us can put a any one of us can put a statement out and talk and say how we were appalled by the behavior, don't like this or don't like that, but we, we really, if, we need to be held to account by all of you if we're not doing anything about it. And one of the things that, you know, I've wanted to do is work with people in the community, work with my colleagues to do an oversight board, to make sure that we have some transparency, some accountability, to work with the department to, to make changes and improvements where they so clearly need to be made. So, you know, I don't want to just give an empty response here. That would be cheap and easy and inappropriate for the, the job that I have, and I also don't want to jeopardize a pending investigation so that we make sure justice is served. But, you know, just know that I want to keep hearing from you. I want to work with you. I want to work with everybody in the community. I want to work with my colleagues to make sure that we can implement things like oversight, hiring social workers, hiring domestic violence advocate here in the community, and, and that we, we have accountability and transparency for everybody involved. And then, other than that, I think that's pretty much, you know, all I have tonight. Thank you to everybody who worked hard and makes, and makes Labor Day possible. Thank you to our unions and our, our men and women here who work in the city each and every day that oftentimes go unrecognized. It certainly goes well beyond Labor Day that we need to fight for the rights of working class people to have, you know, to make sure that, we know that big corporations and that we know aren't treating workers fairly. We know that the, the pay gap that exists between CEOs and the average employee is almost 305 times what the average employee makes as their CEO, so that, you know, we can acknowledge Labor Day, but we need to fight every day for the rights of workers as well. So with that, I have nothing further.
All right. Council President Protem, Londo.
Thanks, President Hurt. First, I'll start off, it's good to see you back. I know you had to miss the last meeting. I know you would rather have been here than where you were, but we appreciate everything you do for us and having you back. Also, congratulations to Adam Goring as well, who stepped up to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals and was reappointed tonight. Thank you for his service, not only here, but as Councilman Rukowski said, also with our students at Wayne Ford Community, or Wayne Westland Community Schools, William D. Ford and Tech Center. Mr. Burke, I'll look into your trash issue. I think I know where you live, or I can look you up and figure out where you live and get that taken care of for you, for sure. And then as far as the goals being scored on me in the, almost that hockey game, in the, in the soccer game, I'm, I'm really good for a while there, and then when it gets close, I let them score. So, no, I'm kidding. No, we enjoy going out there, and I'll be out there Friday as well, so we appreciate that. Tell them to go easy on me this year. Couple more things. Couple Thursdays in August, we had, or actually, we, the DDA had a concert series at Tatten Park slash Central City Park, and it was fantastic. I don't know how many people in the room were there. I know Councilman Godbell, myself, were there. It was incredible. I'm not good with counting how many people were there, but 500 people, a thousand maybe there. It was great to see the community come together. A lot of people come to the community from other communities to, to watch the jazz bands that were playing. We had some incredible artists playing, so hats off to the DDA for putting that event on. They only did two this year. They're looking to do, looking for resident feedback, and they want to do more next summer, whether it be, you know, four concerts or maybe be all summer. So I'll be out there as well. It was, it was a great event. As far as the Wildwood Bike Way study session, we had that. We had a packed room for the Wildwood Bike Way study session, and during Citizens' Comments, we heard from absolutely everybody, which was kind of a shock. The mayor mentioned that one of the only meetings where actually every single person in the room spoke. And I had a little tally up here to see what people were saying. It was split down the middle for, half the people were for it, half the people were for against it, and there was like three or four people that were, they were neutral either way. I thought the city put on a great presentation to expand on the, the project, so it was good to have everybody in the room. And obviously, we didn't reach everybody that day, but the mayor's office did send out letters to every single person or contacted them directly, every person that signed that petition of the 80 people. I think we had less than 20 people in the room. But again, everybody spoke, we heard them, and we'll see where that goes. Lastly, for, to Ms. Wilson, I know what you're talking about, about the speeding over there. I was at Councilman, former Councilman Reeves' house the other day. I won't say the streets, but I did see a couple cop car, police officers had cars pulled over. One had one pull over right in front of Mr. Reeves' house. So they are out there, they are aware of it. Obviously, I didn't talk to them in the middle of it, but Mr. Reeves' wife stated that there has been speeding and people running stop signs. So they are out there, but I know the chief will look into that for you. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilman Godbell for leading us in a pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to thank all my colleagues for kind of your emotional, physical, spiritual support during everything that had been going on with my back. So I wasn't here three weeks ago. I, I have had some severe back issues. Three weeks ago, I was in the emergency room, that's why I wasn't here. And two weeks ago, yesterday, I had to be taken to the emergency room by our fire department. And instead of sitting outside of them, always talking to them, I actually got for a ride in one of our fantastic life-saving vehicles with all their fun tricks and doodads. But I, I tell you what, we do, they're called the Westland Professional Firefighters for a reason, and I can't thank you and your guys enough, chief. So I'll tell you who was there and who took care of me, but I'm sure you know already. But thank you so much. I think we'll always support having our, our firemen and our EMTs here in the city of Westland because it makes a big difference, and I got to see it myself. So thank you so much. I don't know what I would have done without them. Thank you to Councilman Londo for running the meeting three weeks ago. It was kind of a last minute, hey, by the way, I'm, I'm not going to be here. I got in a medical emergency, so thank you. Beyond that, we do, I think a couple things came out. We do have boards and commissions, and I think we are publishing our diversity makeup graphs for all of those boards and commissions, and we're always asking people, so the information's there. You can read on every single board and commission I have, between age, racial makeup, and gender as well. So that is published, so if you guys want to see that, it is on our website, and I encourage you to go take a look at it. And then, of course, if you are a resident, we encourage you always to apply to participate in those boards and commissions. With regards to kind of the big debt, Councilman Godbell was kind of right, it's a very long conversation, but if it's one real simple thing to understand is, there's a very, very, very big difference between debt and future liabilities. That's why they have different words. One's called a future liability, and one is called a debt. Our future liabilities with regards to just one of our pension liabilities that we brought up earlier, I've watched this pension liability go down and down millions and millions of dollars, not because of how much it's been funded, but external market factors such as our credit rating and things that we've done with some of our other bonds has affected that, because it's all actuarial. Somebody sitting down, a professional, saying, look, in 30 years from now, this is what it's going to cost to fund the pensions for these individuals. And what goes into that is average life expectancy, which is going up, but costs of medical care is going up as well. But our ability to fund those as well also affect that. So it's not a debt. We're not sitting on a debt. We're meeting those liabilities every year, paying out our pensions to our police officers, our fire, fire department, and as well as Ask Me and those guys. Those bonds that you see, or excuse me, those debt loads that you see, they aren't fully funded, but most cities aren't. That is not unnormal. That is not unusual. So we're pretty well-funded on most of them. We've actually issued some bonds on some of the debt recently that brought them down dramatically. So we're actually, in one instance, there is future liabilities, but they are being taken care of pretty well, and I think we're working on them very well. So there's a difference between debt and future liability, and the future liabilities will always be there, they'll always move, and we're trying to trend those down by making smart financial decisions. So, and I always appreciate the input and the questions that I get, and we talk about it a lot up here, as well as with the administration and finance. So thank you so much. Like to thank everybody else for coming out today. I know the weather wasn't great, and a lot of people are still enjoying their, their Labor Day weekend, so thanks again for coming in. Thank you to our guests for bringing those things to our attention more. It is troubling to me, as well as my colleagues have expressed, and my colleague and I have talked about this before, so thank you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?